Six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First up, somebody want to move to approve the agenda? Or if you have something to add to the agenda, now would be the time.
I motion to approve the agenda.
Motion and second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, stand on passes. Okay, all items under the consent agenda would pass as one motion unless someone has something they would like to remove to discuss.
Nothing.
Then I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sheldon or Nick, I'm sorry. That happened, Nick, you have a second? Thank you, I'm sorry, I thought it was Sheldon.
Now we can close the meeting.
Motion to...
Motion, we need a motion to close the meeting.
Motion to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and none passes.
Very well.
So?
Um, I can kick this off, Sean.
Have fun.
Um, I don't see anybody here from the public, but I'll just do a quick intro for the recording. Um, that this public hearing is, um, being held as a requirement of statute for the USDA, rural development loan and for the public facilities and public and police facility that is being applied for. Um, it is required by the federal government as part of the stage two documents. I have Angela Lachavoy, um, Stephen Rose, and hopefully Gail, Gail was there a little bit ago, online in case anybody has any questions. Um, what I included for the packet tonight is the current schedule for bonding. When we get to it, that looks like, um, uh, what the payments will be a little bit revised based on current architectural designs of the facility. And the split from the levy to the utility is now sixty-five, thirty-five. So we, the city still stays within those requirements of the levy that was spoken originally last summer. Um, if there's anybody present that has any questions regarding this project, now is the time for the public to come forward.
This is where I get to formally ask if there's any members of the public who would like to speak on this. Please do so now. Going once. I'd say we, we're good to go.
Not gonna ask two or three times.
Right.
Don't need to.
We, not, not on this one. Once, twice, you don't do... Harvey, wanna do it?
No one else on the board has any other further questions?
None here.
At this point?
No, if we haven't examined it at this point.
Okay.
I feel...
I just wanna make sure that we're fully...
Everybody's on the same page?
Doing, doing our, doing our steps, so... That being said, um, our guests on the Zoom call, they have nothing else to add, then you can close the public hearing and open the next one.
Open the next public hearing.
Yep. That was at...
Steven, Angela, Gail, anybody got anything for us?
Nothing, nothing from me.
I don't have anything to add as well.
Then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to pu- uh, close the public hearing for the USDA and open the public hearing for land combination?
Yep, that would be perfect, Jason, thank you.
Second? Motion and a second, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hang on, public hearing, the land combination of the school district is now over.
Okay, um, in the board packet is the, are the documents from the school district, USDA thirty-two regarding a request to combine two parcels where the current, um, trades building program sits. Um, this was discussed at the work session, the planning commission has already heard it, um, has the full support of the planning commission and it's, nothing else has changed. I've received one, um, one phone call from a landowner within the three hundred foot requirement, just wanted to know what it was all about. I explained to her what was going on, she hadn't been up here, her son lives in her house, so she isn't physically here. Um, had no issues with the combination and, um, that was all I had, so... Call for questions and then there's a lot of questions that we can close out to.
Any questions from the public? Going once? Twice? No questions from the public at this time. Need a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Open the regular meeting.
And open the regular.
Thank you Sheldon, we have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Morgan have a second, do, does anybody have anything to discuss? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, here none, passes.
I think I've cut off two guys.
We're on the black dust form now. And there's nobody for the forum either, I don't see.
Nope, not that I'm aware of.
Good.
Guys are going so quick, I better text your fire chief and tell them they're coming soon.
I don't know how old she can slow us down.
Well, you could go over my stuff and come back to them.
Okay.
No, that's fine, let's keep going.
I'm just, I'm wanting to hear what Mike has to say.
Mike doesn't have anything to say. Not a word. Both, both the trucks are here. Got out here now a few things with that, other than that, both working out good. Standards very awesome, love it. Uh, we got a new, a new salt sand mix from the county recently and it's good. It'll melt down to a low five pool, I don't know if you guys noticed when I was out and about last time, especially down at the pond parking lot, it really bitted and took some stuff down, of course it had snowed a little bit and turned really cold. Ran down the trail with it, ran the plow through motions, everything's working good.
Chain better or harder?
Uh, it's chained, yeah, just a, I don't know, a half inch paddle maybe on it, you know?
My truck has an auger that I can clog that.
Yeah, no, we've got the chain and then, uh, I made sure to get the vibrator on it too. Cause the last one that I ran didn't have vibrator and from time to time, get up there and, you know how it goes, yeah, so vibrator, that's been really nice. You can tell when you're spinning and going down the road and all of a sudden there's nothing back there, hit the vibrator and out it comes, so... That'll save a lot of time. Other than that, it, it spreads nicely, we're gonna save on material, puts out so much evener, distributes it better, the pitches all around are way better set up, so it's probably gonna be worth doing higher.
Good.
Anything for me, for any of you?
All frozen?
None.
Why?
Yeah, I got it.
You gotta ask.
No, no, we don't talk about those things. Well, other than you were here and you were here.
Yeah, you had the...
Yeah, when I had to leave for that across the street here, that just turned out to be a, a lack of good judgment, really. Not having heat where you have a, a washing machine, which usually isn't a good thing.
Oh, you were referring to the frozen line in the apartment building recently, yes.
City problem.
Nope, no, we found that out. Hopefully we can keep it that way. Real cold stretches, nervous from time to time.
Those trucks gonna get painted in city colors or?
Pickups?
Yeah.
They're blue. What is close to a city color as we can get?
Don't have our logos put on.
Yeah, eventually we'll put the black dark public works decal on them, yep. Here you go. Sure.
So we're like similarly cold.
Maybe on the water.
Alright, put that to a bolt.
Stock colors from the manufacturer are cheaper?
Yeah. I'll tell you what, we're running on the water shower with how you get some of the dirt. Yeah.
Say we lease it out for advertising fees.
Yes, we do.
Or for Verizon.
Yeah.
Something, yeah.
We won't, we won't start, alright.
No, let's not, shall we?
Back to, back to business. Thanks Mike, Shonda?
Who scored?
Got anything to report? Trying to keep, we'll come in, just trying to go forward.
Well, I saw from the income statements that everything, despite everything, we still have increases, so...
Sales.
Sales, overall sales are still up despite everything, so it's a good job.
We have some, it's bills that were in last budget that they were planning to do anyways, so...
I just wanted to make sure we point that out.
Yeah.
Despite everything, we still have an increase.
Well, if they don't shut us down again, we should be able to make up those negatives. That kinda is a good segue for this, for the funding, right, so... And, uh, no one wants to be in the front row, don't crush my hub down there by your foot, thank you. Um, Shonda and I, uh, have in the packet for the board to consider, um, and I have notified Todd Hagan that you and I have looked through this and it looks like it'll work. Um, the funding schedule for the tax abatement that will, needs to be borrowed for the liquor store addition and remodel. Um, as you can see, the estimates for the, um, addition, originally from last summer didn't include the renovations to the kitchen. Right. Um, although they did include quite a few building updates that were done in two thousand twenty, they kinda washed, but, um, the costs right now are higher than what we anticipated last summer.
The building costs are higher.
Right.
Higher in scope because of just basically building materials.
Right. So, the other thing that the portal notices on the schedule, there's a commitment, a cash commitment from the liquor store so that the borrowed amount is not as high of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This would directly come out of the cash balances of the liquor store. But it would drastically reduce the annual payment by almost seven thousand dollars a year for the liquor store to have to fund once the project is completed. Um, Shonda and I met, um, for a finance meeting just to try to look back and forward in terms of revenues for the liquor store to ensure that this, enterprise fund could afford this renovation and the addition. And based on some of the changes that were done in two thousand twenty, some of the new changes that are moving forward now in two thousand twenty-one, i.e. the, um, reduction of the bank service, the bank charges that we get charged for our merchants, we're passing that off to an average amount to our customers, which will reduce the expenses that the liquor store already pays every month considerably. We're pretty confident that we'll, this liquor store will be able to make this annual payment. Um, knowing how much more business the off sale has taken on in just this past year and the information that Shonda's received from a couple other municipalities that have had renovations to their off sales, she's confident that this is going to be something that's going to make for itself. You wanna add anything? So if there's anybody that has any questions at this time, you know, we can take them, but I've asked Todd Hagan to move forward with looking for bonding for this project so that we can secure a nice low interest rate and move forward with this portion of the, the city buildings project, projects.
And just for the record, that it's, what is our interest rate gonna be on it for twenty?
For twenty years? The coupon rate changes and increases, it goes from a point seven percent to two point four five once it sunsets.
Good. Totally awesome. Pretty low.
It's an, it's an annual payment basically of about forty thousand dollars.
So, council consideration, then we want a motion for this to approve?
I wouldn't feel comfortable asking the council to approve. Yes, that way I know I have, not doing it by myself.
No.
Does that make sense?
No, that's what I'm, that's what I'm here for. So we would need, I need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve it, council or?
Tax abatement bond?
Tax abatement. For twenty twenty-one?
Do we have a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? Look like you got something, Jason.
No, uh, just not anything that's gonna do all this.
Good. Then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and none, and passes. Jason, you're up.
Got nothing pressing, got busy, but really do.
We'll see you, Christina.
People walk out of their cars.
That's a cold weather cold. Yeah, yeah, we won't do that, but there are those. We did all electronics, we can't risk getting our squads doing that. But, no. You guys got anything?
Andy's back.
Andy should be here starting Thursday. Six weeks of...
Her rental leave goes fast.
Quick, I bet. Or not quick enough, I don't know.
Do they have a little boy in country?
Pardon?
Was it?
They had a little girl.
Little girl?
Yeah.
Tom, good to see you when you see him. How long, six weeks for us?
Good thing it was quiet.
Not much, right?
Brian, do you know a copy list?
Well, then, if there's nothing else, Chase, I don't have any specific.
As long as you guys got something, tell me, text me, email me.
At this time. So we're on to Brian.
Do you have a copy list, Christina?
I, do I have one? They do, yes, it's in the packet, it's in the packet.
Were you guys all aware, I know Max was, but...
Yep.
About the SCBA?
The, the femogram?
The only one that may not have known would be Nick. Because he started after it was awarded late summer, early fall.
So Nick, essentially, we, the department put in for a femogram and we put in for SCBA's and we were awarded. So, it's a pretty good deal, last time it got awarded was in two thousand thirteen. It was kind of a, I'm trying to think, yeah, that was, that wasn't a standalone either, that was for, uh, radios, I believe, so... Yeah, this is, this is pretty big for us, it's a large chunk of change that your tax dollars are coming back to the department for, for good use. The packs that we have now, they are, they say they're cycles, they're two cycle doubts, they're no longer NFPA compliant. That's why this was such a kind of a pressing issue, we're really fortunate to get that, so... So, we basically looked at three different vendors, uh, we got, they showed us everything from just a standard pack to the thing that pretty much washes inside and tells you what to do. I mean, that's the way the technology goes, so, uh, but we just wanted to replace what we have and that's kind of just the standard equipment that provides your air ideal H M, so... After everything was said and done, we had a, out of the three, we had two that were, uh, we requested a quotation from this, do they have both copies or just Claris?
They have both.
Okay.
Yep.
So we got, we got one from Claris, which was for the Scott packs, and we got one from Grant Ford's Fire, which was for the MSA. After some discussion with my assistant chief, the members of the department, they were kind of set on either or of these two, either MSA or Scott. We currently have Scott now, so... You know, that, that kind of was helping push me towards the Scott, uh, not so much the price is like a thousand bucks, but there's some ancillary stuff that we have to add on to the MSAs, which would kick it up a little bit, but, um... They're both, they're both great equipment, uh, but in the end, uh, we would, I would like to go with the Scott air packs. Um, it's basically be a zero training, they just take the ones out and put the new ones in, so it's supposed to be. And, um, those are supplied by Claris Safety Equipment out of Rochester for the tune of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars.
So what Brian is requesting is council approval for his recommendation to go with the, the quote from Claris.
I don't have a problem with doing it in LA. So we would need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the Claris SCB quote?
You wanna put the number in there, Sheldon? Price?
Uh, hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-four.
Alright, sir. Motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And where do you go, Brian?
Uh, just a side note, Christina, do you have the five percent total? So do they know that, do they know of this? We, we only have to pay five percent.
Five percent of this?
Okay. That's like sixty-seven hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, that's pretty well covered.
Pretty good deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty happy about that.
We are very happy about that.
That's good, then we can discuss that at the fire protection meeting, which segue, that's the next thing under the fire department is just to let the board know that the annual meeting is, this is not the budget meeting, it's just the annual meeting, is this Thursday night? No, excuse me, the eighteenth, next Thursday night, the eighteen. At six PM, no, 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 no. No, 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 no. And that's at six o'clock here at City Hall.
You'll find you'll attend if anybody...
Okay, Max is gonna be in attendance. Okay. Great. Any questions about the township meeting?
I don't have any.
You got anything else? Oh, Brian's got something else.
We had our, uh, we are, I know we have to discuss this at the townships too, but I just wanna bring the city in a little bit because I know we had discussed it, I think they actually came to last December's meeting?
Radios?
About the radios? And so we're, we're kind of finalizing that, there, there is gonna be some expense, we're not quite sure yet, we're gonna divvy it up between the county numbers, the fire departments. There again, we, we got into eight hundred megahertz very cheaply, you know, wanting to consider that. It's, it's used equipment, uh, we did purchase a couple new ones, which you should be probably getting built for that soon for Rogers. Purchased a couple new portables, um, all the trucks are out, they have eight hundred megahertz, uh, mobiles. We have a ba- eight hundred megahertz base station. Um, there was some, some costs, some coax, antenna. And, uh, so, we had a chiefs meeting here last Thursday and, uh, Chris Muller, he's, um, in charge of emergency management, uh, management number and, um, he was just asking the chiefs, you know, what we think and what we feel about eventually to start shutting off VHF repeaters that the county pays for. It's gonna be a little bit of a phase off probably over the next couple months, um, switching, switching over. Our department's, uh, pretty good. Uh, we'd like to get some more portables, obviously that's, you know, they're very expensive, so... We'll have that on the road in the future. There was another thing brought up, and that's, if you guys are familiar with the rooftop tax that helps fund emergency services?
Yep.
Um, it, right now, I think I mentioned this before, that fire does not have a seat at that table. And it's, it's very important for, for us and all the, the other departments, um, that we try to, try to push that with our county commissioners. that we try to, try to push that with our county commissioners to, to, hey, let's, let's get, let's get a fire rep on this, so that, um, you know, some of this money that's allocated for emergency services, it may be tripled down for the fire department. I think if we don't have representation, I think it might be out of sight online. And, um, that's just my thoughts. I, you know, I can make phone calls to the, to our local, you know, representative or county commissioner. If you got anything phone call, we'll power to you. Appreciate it. Uh, so, we're, we're all, all the departments right now in the county are, are kind of pushing, trying to push that a little, little bit, and try and get us a seat at that table. But, uh, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
Stay warm.
We're working on it.
Be very cold.
Yeah.
I don't want to hear any frostbite calls, okay?
No, I don't, I don't.
Alright, good deal. I'm done.
So when is our next, when, when do they meet again, the townships?
For fire?
Yeah.
This meeting.
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
Yep. Something in your head that needs to come out?
Nope, not yet.
Okay.
Oh, man. I feel like I'm getting a little close.
We'll, uh, we'll wait till then, I guess. I'm assuming there's nothing from the golf course?
No, but I'm going to try to call on a board meeting here as soon as the barometer decides to go back up here and I can get some people out of, out of their homes.
I know they pay, uh, the golf course pays a membership to the chamber.
Yes.
Do we ever see one of our folks representing the golf course in a chamber meeting?
I do.
Okay. You work out with the golf course. Yeah.
I sit on the board.
Yeah, yes, or why?
Well, the city pays for, I mean, one of them, they pay an additional two businesses, uh, one for both, one for each enterprise fund, liquor store and the golf course, but valid point. Of course, holding a meeting at noon on a Wednesday, middle of the day for some people, but staff of golf courses and.
I understand, well, especially this time of year, they should be able to make it.
Valid point, Jim could probably make it, Cam probably couldn't.
Well.
But, it's a good suggestion.
Okay. Anything from the library? I'm hoping that they haven't had their meeting yet, so. Unless Nick's got something from, something else, I haven't, other than the meeting you attended already, right? Yeah.
Not really, there might be a chance to get some special funding there.
Okay. Um, Christina, it's your turn.
Okay. I have a couple of things that need action by the council. Letter A is the annual assessment agreement between the city of Black Duck and Beltrane County. Um, each year at this time, the council agrees to a set dollar amount that the city pays for the county's assessment department to act as the city assessor. Um, this is a budgeted amount every year that comes out of, um, our funds, but it needs to come in the form of a motion to approve the agreement. So I would need a, a motion on this, please.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the assessment agreement between the city of Black Duck and Beltrane County.
I motion that we approve the assessment agreement between Black Duck and Beltrane County for the amount of forty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Second. We have a motion and a second on that. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Closed, there are none, passes. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, item B and C are together, Max. Well, they're together, but they're separate.
Separate, yeah.
So, the, the first one, the council consideration is the petition for detachment of property from the city of Black Duck, from Joe Wilhelmie. Um, the board remembers the discussion from the work session. And if they're going to approve the detachment, then the council has to take, well, sorry, let me reword here. So the petition is B. You guys want to have any discussion on that? Again, at this point, you can. C is the drafted resolution for the council to take action upon, whether it is a pass, fail, or tie. Is that, is that a little more clear?
Yep.
Okay, I kept them separate so that there could be two distinct areas.
Well, at this time, do we have anything further to discuss on the petition?
I don't. I don't.
I guess I would, uh,
Move on to C.
We will move on to C.
Okay.
Or we will need a motion? Do you want to word this one, to approve it?
So, the way that the resolution is stated at the bottom.
Let's see that.
You would take, you would have somebody make a motion, have a second, take your vote, you wish it to be roll call, you could do so at that time. And then the resolution would either say a support or an oppose near the bottom at that point.
Well.
Because you needed a, you need to motion before you can vote on it.
I'll make that motion, Max. I'll make the motion to approve the detachment from the city of Black Duck.
We have a motion and a second. This is the last chance to discuss it. Before we ask for a vote, and I will ask for a roll call vote, because I want everybody singly on this.
Just take a note here, so I can make sure I get everybody max.
Yep.
Okay. You ready?
If there's no further discussion, we'll take that vote now. Okay, go ahead Christina.
Okay. I'm going to go into the top to, or the bottom to the top.
Thirty-one.
Okay, counselor sites, how do you vote? Oops, whoops, ten. Counselor Austin, how do you vote?
Nay.
Nay. Counselor Cole, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mayor Gillette, how do you vote?
I'll vote aye.
Motion ties?
Motion does not pass.
Motion does not pass.
I mean, the next step is passing it out to a lawyer or asking Joe, Joseph Joe?
Joe Wilhelmie?
Yeah, what he wants to do?
Both.
Okay, both.
Both. Because if the, if the vote ties, the vote dies, which means it's not an opposal and it's not a pass. So, it would have to, and I'm sure Joe Lando will probably advise the same way, it will have to be revoted upon. But nothing's been filed with the state department for this at this point.
Okay.
So, the council has the time. If, you know, the city attorney recommends having the vote be redone, the council can do that at that time, I can put it on the March agenda. If it dies again, yeah, I'll need city attorney advisement, Jason.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, at this point, it's, yeah, it's neither for or against, so.
Correct.
We're.
Moving on?
We're, we're going to move right along.
Okay.
Approval needed.
Okay, so D is another annual, um, resolution that has to be, um, passed by the board. And this is authorizing para contributions for our part-time, our qualifying part-time police officers. This is done every year. And the reason for that is because they're not full-time, para requires this resolution be passed every year with our part-time, um, staff listed, so that they know it's okay to still do para elections for them. So I need an authorization for this resolution, please, Max.
Okay. I would move to approve city Black Duck Resolution Number twenty-two-one oh seven, for para contributions. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second? Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed, there are none, passes. And on letter E?
And then E is just circling back to the public hearing for the school district. Um, I just need authorization for the land combination.
I just want to say that that is the weirdest certificate of survey I've ever.
And if I can get that in the form of a motion, that would be awesome.
Very good.
I motion to approve the land combination ISD thirty-two certificate parcel combination. Yeah.
Nice one.
Yeah, we motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed, there are none, passes.
Uh, lastly, I just have some dates for the board to be aware of. This Wednesday is the February Black Duck Development Court meeting here at City Hall. Anyone that is interested in attending, uh, next Monday, the fifteenth, is President's Day, so, um, in observance of that, this office will be closed. On February seventeenth at noon, the chamber, um, February meeting, holds a meeting at Restaurant Seventy-One. And, yeah, I said that's at noon.
Really? That's not going to be a Zoom thing this time, or?
It is not, and in January, the chamber was to hold their meeting at Hungry Duck. And three of the four board members, our work, the workloads were so tight that week, that at last minute, it was canceled for, we just could not get enough, um, time to actually hold the meeting, so we had to cancel that morning. Um, moving on, February seventeenth at two PM, uh, the planning commission should meet here at City Hall. There will be something on the agenda. So, I, that won't be canceled, they haven't held a meeting since November. Um, I should preface that by stating to the board that the vacation of streets that the city council approved for Mount Sparty at the last meeting, he has subsequently come back and stated that the language needed to have streets vacated did not encompass everything he wanted. And at this point, I am recommending what he wishes to fully have done to start at the planning commission, because he's requesting all of the roads be vacated. And he is looking towards re-aligning and looking at those property lines and doing the property lines differently. He's in the process of selling the parcel that Red Nicky Tractor Ranch is on, and granting an easement for Universal Drive. And then the other section of the property down there where the stump jumpers will hold their, have their parking lot, he's going to sell those and he wants to keep the remaining property, but it looks like the whole thing might change. It's where all the parcels are, all the lines are drawn. So I've asked him to start fresh and go to the planning commission because of zoning.
Okay.
It's not as simple as vacating some streets that haven't even been developed at this point, it's a little bit more involved, so the next time the council hears anything about it, will probably not be until March.
So we approve to vacate streets that are in the wrong spot, essentially, or not where he thought they were?
No, no, um, the council approved the correct streets, they were, the lines for those roads were drafted in that preliminary plat- that I presented at the work session in December.
Okay.
However, those were, roads had never been developed or created.
Okay, so, since they weren't there.
But now, Matt is asking for all of Universal from the easements, you know, the right-of-way out or in to be vacated, and only granting an easement for Red Nicky, but he's also redrawing the lines for that parcel. So that has to go back to the planning commission to be discussed first, before this board actually reviews it.
And that'll be, they're probably looking at that on the seventeenth.
I hope so, if I get all the documents from Matt, then yes, that's what I've discussed with him. I don't want to bring it to this board until the planning commission is reviewed at first. Any other questions on that? Okay. Um, moving down, February eighteenth, like we discussed with Brian, is here is the, um, annual meeting of townships for fire protection.
Are they going to be voting on anything on that?
No, typically, the February meeting is just a review of the previous year's expenses, um, and the budget. Um, the formula of what the townships have already being paid, are already being charged, has already been approved in the August meeting, so it's a preliminary meeting for the townships to have with the fire chief prior to their annual meeting, which is typically held in March. But by contract, it has to be held. So there's really not much being voted on at that time. Any other questions on that? Moving down, February twenty-sixth starts the absentee balloting for the special election. Um, towards the end of this month, they'll be picking up the election equipment that we use for regular, um, elections during the primary and the general election, and that'll be here for anybody that wants to cast their vote early, prior to April thirteenth, and that'll go through April twelfth.
Yeah.
So, just enough way I on that.
So you can vote for anybody you want, that whole.
That whole timeframe?
That whole time.
Yep. Um, moving down the line, March eighth is the next city council regular meeting. April thirteenth, again, is the special election. April twenty-sixth is the local Bo- Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting. Um, I have not put a work session on the calendar, Max. I wanted to discuss that with the board. The reason I did was I'm a little hesitant, because I know there's still some finalizing of the, um, public facilities and police facility bonding and the stage two documents, as well as the liquor store, and I don't know if I'm going to have all of that stuff ready for a huge discussion at the work session or not, but I'm sure there's going to be more for us to discuss, so typically, your next work session would be the twenty-second, weeks from tonight. I don't want to forego one with all of those big projects moving on, but I'll just put it on this agenda.
No, we'll have it the twenty-second, that's fine, we'll.
So you're going to still call that? So you're going to stop all that? Great. I'll leave that as there.
We'll have it.
Okay. So it'll be six o'clock here. That is all, that is under me unless the board has any questions.
Not here?
Oh, I agree.
Counselor reports? Yes. No? Well, I'm going to congratulate the Black Duck High School one act play, taking first place at the subsection and third place at sections. Now, that first place was the first time, I think. Jennifer said twenty-three years they've won, so. First, you're proud of my daughter.
And how many schools is that against?
I believe that's six, six schools.
Wow. That's awesome.
That's for, for our subsection, yeah. And then section is, I'm, I'm not even sure. Fairly big crooks things in there. Figure competition.
I would like to congratulate Melissa. She's finished her tenth year, well, cantering her tenth year. So that's a big milestone. Thank you.
Eight years for Christina.
I know. I passed up the last two administrators, so something must be going right. Other than that, or now I have a nice city hall to come to work to.
Smells a little better.
All I can say is I, I want to thank Mike and his team for putting up with me and the time that they've committed to getting this done on such a short timeframe. And Paige for putting up with me and putting in some extra hours to get what they've done. So. Yeah, absolutely.
I saw quite a few nights I drove by Christina standing on her desk. I was hoping that wasn't a standard thing, but I just.
No, no, a lot of, a lot of painting, a lot of ceiling tiles. But, you know, there's, there's still like a, I got a little checklist of just some, some other things that have to be done. Obviously, we just, Chris just put the baseboards on today and there's a lot of touch of paint that needs to be done. The counter for this new wall around the clerk's desk still has to be ordered. But overall, such an enormous improvement on this building. I'm so proud of it. I still plan on looking for some older photos of the old city hall and this bank and then blowing those up and framing them. I think it'll be a really nice touch. And here to have some, some member Amelia, if you will, of the, of the town.
Like a display case?
Well, we have a lot of plat maps and old maps that are in the safe right now that we took off the wall, Sheldon. And I think we're going to reuse some of those frames and put those in it. I think it'll just, it'll, it'll be a nice theme throughout the building.
Do you want to put our current logo someplace?
I haven't even thought about that. I do need a clock, so.
You know.
Maybe, maybe something out of metal or, I don't know. I'm open to suggestions, but, you know, I really like the idea of the old pictures. And like, I've spoken to Adam at the lumberyard and they have an engineering printer. They can print up to thirty-six inches wide. So I could get some nice blown-up photos. So yeah. That's it for me.
Nobody has anything else?
Oh, go ahead. I do have one more thing.
I was just going to motion to adjourn.
Oh, can I say one more thing?
Let's get it on the.
Because I didn't put it on the agenda, but I should let the board know that since the last meeting, the application for the demolition of the buildings did go through on February one. I have not heard if it's been approved or not, but it did get all done on time with the purchase of thirty-two Main Street.
Nice.
Yep. That is still in the works, but a purchase order for all three buildings has gone through. So that will make the transition much smoother when it comes time. And I think that estimate with asbestos removal, repouring the sidewalk for the utility came to like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that includes procurement of the properties too, which is only like thirty quarters of that. So if awarded, half of that would be grant and the other half would be alone.
So it's not too much more than what we were assuming.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking like one fifty, one sixty, so no.
We're right on them.
We're pretty damn close. Yep. It was very nice to have the structural engineer look at all three buildings when they did. And they really learned a lot about how that was all created. But it'll be a nice space for something new if and when, whenever that comes around. So I'm, I'm crossing my fingers we get, we get approved for that.
Amazing with the asbestos, how much lower for the removal because that's a big.
And the disposal, the disposal of the asbestos is actually more expensive than taking it out. It costs more to dispose it than to destroy it. Sorry, eating stuff on your toes.
Nope, that's why I was waiting.
Thought you might want that.
You're up. Alright, uh, motion to, uh, to adjourn. Come set approve.
I would motion to approve and a second. Favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.